With it being election season, one of the troubles around the country is that many school board elections are going unopposed and people are not as involved in the school board since, for a couple of reasons, in many states it is an unpaid position. And then also the commentator mentioned that you're in charge of people's tax dollars and their children, which are very important things. So in this season of thankfulness, I would like to take an opportunity to thank my fellow board members for their service. We are a board of seven and each of us has come forth to serve their community. And while we don't agree with each other on some issues, what we do agree with is that we come forth to serve the community and do the work that we have to do to make Lancaster the district that it is. So with the attitude of gratitude that I like to preach to my students, I say thank you to my fellow board members as well as to those who have attended this evening. I'd also like to recognize Karen Howard, who is here from Senator Gallivan's office. Welcome and thank you for attending. We start this evening with a couple of presentations. And first is 4.1 Playworks, which is Mrs. Marx, Mr. Palmer, Jackie Kleiner, and some Court Street students. And Mrs. Kleiner, should we be seated in the front row? Sure, love to.
All right, so we're gonna start. Technology, we really are good with it, I promise. I'd like to welcome the Lancaster Board of Education here to Court Street this evening. And thank you again to our community members and the parents who are here. We have some students who are the real experts in Playworks, but we're gonna talk a little bit about what Playworks is and do some fun demonstrations. So Playworks is a recess implementation training support program, which is a lot of words. It's really about analyzing how our recess currently works and also having students learn games that they can then take out to the playgrounds or play within the classroom. So this is an initiative that was brought to us on all the elementary buildings and Williams Street School, K6. And tonight, we really wanna share Court Street's rollout of this and talk through how it's really taking off here at Court Street. So I'm really gonna read right from the Playworks philosophy. This was one thing that really caught my eye when looking through a lot of the information that Playworks provided us. They said, "Traditionally, older children pass down games and take the lead in modeling a culture of play for younger children. Our experience is that diminishing opportunities for unsupervised play in our society have left kids with less knowledge of traditional recess games, less experience resolving conflicts independently, and fewer strategies for making play fun, inclusive, and safe enough to avoid trips to the principal's office. When grownups or older students in leadership positions introduce basic rules and set the tone, children are better equipped to make play work." That quote, I wish I wrote that, that was great, is really the heart of what Playworks does. And it really caught my eye when reading through a lot of what we've been reviewing here at Court Street. So, I'm not talking slow enough to get this going. Screen two would show you that Playworks is actually a partnership with the Ralph Wilson Jr. Foundation. And it provides districts and schools with a grant that covers 100% of the cost to implement. Did you hear that? 100% of the cost, which is great. They provide training, they provided two days of training for some of our teachers here at Court Street. We have a consultant coming here in November to assist us with that. They've provided equipment and materials for the recess games and it's just been incredible. So, now is when I was going to turn it over to Mrs. Marx. So, we have a number of people who've been very involved with this. Mrs. Marx and Mr. Palmer are both Playworks coordinators. They went to the training and I'm going to send it over to Mrs. Marx to talk a little bit more about it.
She's so nice to do that without the slide working. It's awesome. Good thing I wrote a few things down. So I am Mrs. Marx. Playworks is a program, like Mrs. Kleiner said, designed to help enhance our school's current recess program. Most recess today takes place on the playground. And playgrounds are wonderful places to have recess. And our playground certainly gets a lot of use. But sometimes it can get overcrowded. And of course, the weather does not always cooperate in Buffalo. So it's nice to have an alternative activity for our recess program. And that's where Playworks comes in. Playworks provides safe, fun, and healthy play at school, both indoors and out. These games and activities help every child to feel included, be active, and build social and emotional skills. Now, we're gonna play a game. But the game that we are supposed to watch on the screen, which isn't up on the screen, was a bunch of second graders playing a game called Switch. Not the Nintendo Switch, but Switch. Okay? See, only the kids know what I'm talking about? And Switch is really becoming a quick favorite of our students. We're hoping to show you Switch live, not on the screen, but there is a video of Switch on the screen, should it become available. You said that three minutes ago. So what's different about Playworks? Well, in just a few minutes, we're gonna give you a live demonstration of two Playworks games. You'll see that these games are not your typical games, not the win-lose format that you're used to, where your team beats my team. For the past couple of weeks, Mr. Palmer and I have really enjoyed teaching Playworks to our students during our physical education class. This way, when the classroom teacher says it's time for recess, the children already know how to play and the kids can get right down to business of being active and giving their brains a break. Ooh, we're up to the password. It's fantastic. So this is the time where I turn it over to Mr. Palmer.
All right, my job's easy. All I have to do, you're gonna see a picture of our playground pretty soon. And part of Playworks is, everybody knows when you go out to recess, you're playing on the playground and it can get overcrowded. So the best thing about Playworks is it gives kids an opportunity to do things besides, they can do things besides playing on the playground. So we're gonna have some designated areas outside. Mrs. Marx and I will provide all the equipment that Playworks gave us. The kids will know the games ahead of time. So when they go out to recess, it's no longer just make a mad dash for the playground. Kids that wanna do that can still do it, but the ones that might be a little hesitant to jump on all the different climbing things or a little nervous about that stuff, there's gonna be at least two other games they can do every single day when they're outside at recess. And we all know how the weather is in Buffalo and you're gonna see in one of the slides, Mrs. Grady, our second grade teacher, she has her classroom playing one of these games right in the class. They move some equipment out of the way, or the desks out of the way, and we're able to do everything right inside the classroom. Here comes a slideshow.
Okay, let's start over. No. Here's, we'll kind of walk through it. I talked through the Ralph Wilson Foundation. What we really want you to see is the kids in action. I don't want you to miss that piece of it. So here are some second graders, and I believe this is Mrs. Grady's class. Again, it was already mentioned about how a lot of these games are learned in PE classes. And then a lot of that transfers outside to designated recess areas. And again, Playworks consultant will come in and help us with some of that. Also, it's a great opportunity for indoor recess, so the games transfer to the classroom setting if kids need a brain break or it can be a longer activity, but it allows some opportunity within the classroom too. All right, I think we're caught up. Is this where I, I think I take over from here, right? Okay, so next steps, because we wanna get our kiddos up here, they're the real experts. The next steps for here at Court Street, tomorrow actually, we have a faculty meeting here and all of the teachers have been told to bring sneakers because they will be getting some of the folders with the games in them. They'll be participating in games to become familiar with them. Also, the Playworks consultant visits us on November 21st. And they'll do things like give us, you know, some recommendations, they'll meet with the recess coordinators, the team in our building planning team. And then lastly, our building planning team is really taking this over and working throughout the school year to organize playground sign-out a little bit better and just make the playground and the areas around the building more structured, yet fun and kid-directed. So one last little video before our experts show us more. And those were some first graders in Mrs. Cost's room, so. All right, here we go. You are going to see two games, Evolution and Switch. And if you have comfy shoes on, I know that there are some kids that would love to have you participate. All right.
Okay, so, a little background knowledge on the game Evolution. You are going to need to know how to do rock-paper-scissors. Anybody need me to review rock-paper-scissors for you? I could. Are we good with rock-paper-scissors? Okay, all right. Okay. Oh, paper in front of the thing. Okay. So oddly enough, we don't call it rock-paper-scissors. Playworks calls it Rochambeau. Don't ask, it's a long answer. So we call it Rochambeau. So in the game Evolution, you need to know how to do that because you're gonna compete in Rochambeau, rock-paper-scissors, throughout the whole game. And you're gonna try to win and evolve to Rock Star status. You will begin. Eggs look like that. And when you find another egg, you can compete against an egg and only against another egg. They're gonna Rochambeau, let's see what happens. Ah, Kara wins, paper covers rock. Kara evolves to chicken status. Mr. Palmer stays an egg. In the interest of time, Mr. Palmer, let's just pretend that he went off, he beat somebody, and he turns into a chicken. And now he can compete against Kara because they're at the same level. Let's see what happens. Oh, she wins again with paper covers rock. Kara becomes a dinosaur, T-Rex. Mr. Palmer stays a chicken, but he won and now he's back. And he can find another dinosaur. And let's see what happens. Ooh, she beats him again, paper covers rock. Kara is now at Rock Star status. She gets to stay at Rock Star status as long as she wins this upcoming round. Mr. Palmer's now a Rock Star. Oh, he gets her again, she gets him. All right, so she stays a Rock Star. Mr. Palmer bumps himself all the way back down to an egg. Okay? Any questions? I know these kids in orange shirts are ready to play. Is there anyone who's dressed nicer who wants to play? Oh, he's coming, don't worry. All right, all right, up the sides. Orange shirt kids, go for it, third graders. Everybody starts as an egg, so hands are up. I'll tell you when to start, boys and girls, maybe get a few friends up there. Once again, you're only competing against your Evolution status, okay? So eggs against eggs, chickens against chickens, dinos against dinos, Rock Stars against Rock Stars. Good luck. Ready? Go for it. Of course, you can take pictures. Anybody at Rock Star yet? And not a Rock Star to compete with. Oh, there he is, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Sage, going at it. That's exactly what the kids do. All right, let's give him a big round of applause. Okay. All right, adults, you might wanna sit tight or hang up there for a minute because we're gonna show you Switch, which is one of the videos that you watched earlier. This is the game called Switch, and the kids love this one. My demonstrating team, hop onto the stars and the poly spots if you could. If you are not, Bailey, stand on that one. If you're not standing on a poly spot or a star, come to the stairwell over here, you'll be the waiting line. So you can go left stairwell or right stairwell. If you're not standing on a poly spot or a star, Mrs. Buckholz, can you grab that? Stand on that one. Okay. Okay.
All right, so the game Switch is kind of like a musical chairs type of game. Whoever is standing on the star in the middle, their job is to put their hands above their heads with their hands together and yell "Switch." Once they do that, everybody has to find one of the circle poly spots. So there's gonna be one person that doesn't have a spot left, their job is to go give a high five to the person that's in the waiting line. The new person comes into the star and they're gonna be the one to yell "Switch" to start the new round. Now this game, because we have so many people, we have two games going on. If at recess time, there's not enough to have two games, it's simple enough to take one away, or we can always add more spots to it if we have a number of students that wanna play.
Do we need to stop it right there? It's supposed to be safe, safe, yeah. No, they don't wanna stop. Okay, thank you so much. Boys and girls, stay up there for a minute, stay up there. These are the true experts, they know the games and they did a great job demonstrating. These are students from Mississippi's class, Mrs. Fry's, Mrs. Buckholz's class, they're awesome. They have been so excited to be a part of this presentation, so thank you very much. Can you take a bow?
All right, and thank you very much again. I thank Karen Marchioli and Marie Perini, who kind of brought this to the elementary group of principals. And it's really taken off mainly due to fantastic training for the teachers and they just, they were sold, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you, students, for coming. If it is your bedtime now, you can go home if you'd like to, if parents wanna take them home. Next, we have a presentation with respect to the Cold War veterans' tax exemption, which will be led by Mrs. Phillips. Would you like us to stay here, Mrs. Phillips?
Slightly less exciting than the Playworks presentation, will be a presentation on the Cold War veterans' tax exemption. All right, so if you can recall, we had a couple of members of our community this past spring bring up the option of the Cold War veterans' exemption to the Board of Education in a couple of different situations, one being Mr. Petosniak, who is actually here tonight. So we have put together information on this possible exemption and that is what I'm going to present to you. So some history regarding veterans' tax exemptions. Back in 2013, New York State passed an amendment, signed an amendment into law to RPT 458A, which was December 18th, 2013, which granted the option for school districts to adopt resolutions granting some sort of exemption from school taxes to alternate veterans. Alternate veterans being veterans who served during, active duty during a period of war. Prior to that, towns, villages, municipalities, counties were able to offer veterans' exemptions, but school districts were not authorized to do so under the law. So Lancaster adopted the alternate veterans' exemption for school tax purposes in November 2014 at the highest exemption levels allowable, which also mimicked Erie County Village and Town of Lancaster, Alma, and Chictuaga. And those levels were 18,000, 12,000, and 60,000. Lancaster was the first district in Western New York to grant this exemption to veterans. So Chapter 253 of the Laws of 2016 amended property tax law 458B. The alternate exemption was 458A. This is 458B, which then granted the option for school districts to adopt a resolution granting the exemption to Cold War veterans, which previously was not allowed under the alternate veterans' exemption. Cold War veterans, for people's knowledge, are veterans who served on active duty between September 2nd, 1945 and December 26th, 1991. So the towns, counties, municipalities have been able to offer this exemption prior to this change in the law. And they, Erie County, Town of, Village of Lancaster, Town of Chictuaga, and Town of Alma are all offering the maximum, which is at a 15% level, and that is $12,000 for Cold War veteran and $40,000 for a Cold War veteran that is considered disabled. And that is the basic maximum under New York State law. So what does the 12 and 50,000, or 40,000 mean? The $12,000, it's up to $12,000 based on the equalization rate in the town that the veteran lives in and also based on their assessed value in their home. And then the disabled vet gets the $40,000 option. There also is a lower option, which is 10%. So that $12,000 turns to $8,000 maximum instead, and then the 40,000 for the disabled vet remains the same. In our community, there are 179 Cold War veterans in Lancaster, 30 in Chictuaga, and one in Alma. 161 of the Lancaster veterans are just considered general, and then there is 18 disabled veterans, 25 in Chictuaga, and five disabled, and then the one is considered general in Alma. I went door-to-door in Continental. The county and our assessor, our local assessors also provide that information. They offer this tax exemption, so they have all of the accurate numbers because they have the same demographics of people that are getting an exemption from the taxes they levy. This is just Cold War. Yeah. Yeah, it is a big period of time. That's true. So if the board is going to consider offering this tax exemption in addition to the one that is already offered, the alternate exemption, there is a positive effect on eligible veterans. It would be in effect, if adopted at some point before March 1 of the following year, would be in effect for the next year's school tax levy. Eligible veterans would automatically receive the exemption if they already received the exemption on their town or county taxes. If they don't already receive that exemption, they would have to apply to the town for the exemption. The exemption is deducted from the assessed value of their property. It's not in the form of a rebate or anything like that, and the exemption is taken before STAR savings. Effect on others, if the exemption was granted, the district continues to levy our total tax levy, so there is not a negative effect or, you know, revenue, on the revenue stream of the district. STAR reimbursement could be reduced because the exemption is taken first. Let's say someone's house is assessed at $40,000, and they have the disabled. If this exemption was passed, that $40,000 exemption would go off of their exemption or their assessment first before, where otherwise STAR would have just kicked in, and the district receives money back from state, the state from STAR. But again, whether the STAR is impacted or not, the STAR is factored into what we're getting for our total tax levy, so we're still, there is no impact on the overall revenue stream for the district. And then the end result is really that the levy is redistributed in each township to those without the exemption, so non-veterans will be, you know, paying the difference for granting the exemption. I guess so the real probably big question is, what is the impact on those others if this exemption were to be granted? So the total exempt assessed value, these are estimates, estimated maximum impact. So the total exempt assessed value for Lancaster that would be coming off of the rolls would be $2.6 million. Chictowaga, $500,000, and Elma, $12,000. So that would change, if we applied it to this year's tax rate, just for the purpose of comparing, that would change our tax rate in Lancaster and Chictowaga by 2 cents per thousand dollars, and in Elma, it would change the tax rate by $6.75. So in Lancaster, with that 2 cent per thousand impact on the tax rate, we could estimate that annually, it would cost a homeowner of a $100,000 home $2 additional each year. A homeowner for a $200,000 home would be an additional $4 each year, and so on. So that is what I have for the exemption. Does anybody have any questions about how it works or what the impact is?
Okay, so when I first got a look at the cursory, a cursory look at the numbers, it made sense to me, and then looking at it more in depth, that made sense again. And I remember very well when Lancaster was the leader in the area, passing the Veterans Tax Exemption some years ago at the highest levels. And I think, you know, it speaks a lot to our thankfulness and our gratitude to those who serve our country, that we offer this exemption to them. Yeah, thank you. So we were the first district in Western New York to offer the first Veterans Tax Exemption, and as Ms. Phillips just stated, if we were to offer this tax exemption, we would be the first and only district in Western New York to offer this exemption. So what I'd like to do right now is make a motion to open this up for discussion and for a vote. Okay, and if you would like to return to our seats so we could speak to this issue, and then we could vote on it, if that would be all right? That way, we won't have to pass the microphone around? And thank you for the information, Mrs. Phillips. So, okay, so at this point, I would say, you know, questions or comments, and I would welcome any comments. You know, it's, I did excuse the young people because it would be past their bedtime to stay, but this is, you know, more, some more of the very good things that go on at specifically Lancaster Central School District Board meetings, and I would welcome any input before we put this to a vote. And just to clarify, so if we do decide to vote now, we would have to just reaffirm that on 12/21 at the very end of the meeting. Any questions or comments about the exemption as it was presented by Mrs. Phillips? Okay, hearing no questions or comments? What Dr. Bailey explained is that-
How would I move that we move it up to right now?
Yeah, I don't, I don't, do we need a motion to move it up to now? We should? Okay, make the motion. I second the motion. All in favor of moving the agenda item up on the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, so moved?
Pat, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
I am completely 100% in favor of this and support it completely, but I'm going to abstain from voting only because this specifically impacts my household, as my husband is a Cold War veteran, and I think it may be, I'm not sure, but I think it may be a conflict of interest. So I'm going to remove myself from voting, but want it on the record that I do, I'm thrilled, this is awesome, I totally support it, but I'm going to refrain from voting just for that purpose.
Thank you, Mrs. Christopher. So. Okay, just to read the resolution, start at resolve, yeah? Whereas Lancaster Central School District recommends the adoption of the following resolution, "A Resolution of the Board of Education of Lancaster Central School District Beginning in the taxable school year 2018-19 in relation to the Cold War Veterans Exemption from Real Property Taxation under Section 458/B of the Real Property Tax Law of the State of New York, and whereas a presentation on the matter was given by the district's Assistant Superintendent of Business and Support Services, Ms. Jamie Phillips, at a meeting of the Board of Education of Lancaster Central School District on November 6, 2017, at 7:00 PM at Court Street Elementary School, 91 Court Street in the Lancaster Central School District in Lancaster, New York. On said resolution now, therefore be it resolved that a resolution of the Board of Education of the Lancaster Central School District, beginning with the 2018-19 school year taxes levied in relation to the Cold War Veterans Exemption from Real Property Taxation under Section 458/B of the Real Property Tax Law of the State of New York, be enacted as follows. Section 1, the purpose of this resolution is to adopt the maximum exemption allowable in Real Property Tax Law, Section 458/B. Number 2, a 15% exemption not to exceed the basic state maximum of $12,000, or the product of $12,000 multiplied by the latest state equalization rate for the township, and $40,000, or the product of $40,000 multiplied by the latest state equalization rate for the township, for veterans with a service-connected disability. Section 2, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its filing with the village and town of Lancaster, Town of Chictowaga, and Town of Elma, and shall be applicable to all assessment rolls prepared on or after March 1, 2018, until otherwise amended. The recommended actions are to, the motion to approve the alternate Veterans Exemption from Real Property Taxation under Section 458/B of the Real Property Tax Law as submitted." So if we were to, we've made a motion to discuss. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
I think we should, I think we should move to pass the resolution now.
Yeah, I think that's what we're doing. So we're moving, just so everyone knows, as Mike stated, we are moving to pass the resolution right now.
So you moved it, we need a second.
So I'm, I moved, I think we moved to call for a vote, right? And then questions and comments, and now we're voting, right? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Don. Okay, so just to clarify, Mrs. Phillips, so as the formality, we have to, we are done with that? So it's done and done? Or do we have to revisit that as an agenda item later in the meeting?
That does not need to be revisited. It's a separate piece that handles how it's apportioned in the tax levy. So that last agenda item tonight was, if this agenda item that you just approved was approved, then you need to, then you do need to take action on 12.21.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, 5.0 correspondence. We received a letter from Wendy Dobbins dated October 11, 2017. We also received a letter from LAST dated October 13, 2017, and I had a conversation with Mrs. Ford, who was at the last meeting, since last meeting. Any other board members have any correspondence they'd like to mention? 6.0, approval of minutes. 6.1, could I have a motion to accept the regular session minutes from our October 2 meeting? Or, I'm sorry, October 11th? No, October 7th. My fault.
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 6.2, could I have a motion to accept the regular, or the work session minutes from our October 23 work session? Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 7.0, items from staff organizations. Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association? Thank you, Mr. Marchioli. Anyone from the Lancaster Central Teachers Association?
Wait, yes, sorry. This is my quick share. We three of us had a lot of major danger here. Number one, our library, Ms. Jared Johnson, who's the chair of the whole park, recently received a grant, being out of $125 to the Lakeview Foundation. Now, so we just ran up on the middle of the library. It has three, little free library boxes, and it's a closet, and it takes all three books. It's something in a place around our community, high and down. Also, four street teachers raised $100 to charity fundraisers, who's one of those supporting construction supply. Number two, each director raised a participation in the annual home run, which is a three-quarter library held here on our school grounds. This event was organized by myself, by colleague Chris Palmer, who's known to be our main people as well. And we're very proud of our third graders. Although their graders are not the only ones who recently made so, teachers ran a home run. Six fourth grade teachers ran in a local bike lane to support eight along you. Those teachers are Ashley, Bill, Christie, Fry, and Cora, Amy, Uncle, and Al, and Al E, and Donald E. Those were the great ones for making, they did a great job at the beginning. Finally, number three, do you know that tradition at Children's Hospital, Buffalo, and Buffalo Drive? I didn't handle that. I just started everything. Well, recently, we attracted a hospital health contact, and where they need to be posted for, and it's meant, they're terrible, rendition of the bathroom floor by, and we have a children's music song played throughout the halls, and we will try to come to that time, that time, of course. Our very old first aiders, they're like a chair, and I suppose all of them are around the floor by, and actually means to my. Absolutely, over 75 applications, because before, Mr. Jan Rafferty had dated into the top man. Last season, he invited some more songs live, and we dug. Regrettably, he did not show up as number one, but he certainly powered one, and we are so proud of him, and he's glad we walked him up to that, and he's been here in our house. We hope he can hear it. He will hopefully report it, and we have friends from our school, and I'm a lady.
Thank you very much for that report. Anyone from the Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from the Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? Okay, thank you. 8.0, board reports. Anyone from the board have anything they'd like to report on?
Want me to go first? I will go first. I have quite a bit, but I'm going to try and make this quick. It was a busy month for us as board members. Why are they all leaving? Isn't it a requirement to stay for the entire board meeting, or just, no? I did the same thing when I was, anyway. Okay, so this month, October, in the beginning of the month, October 12, I attended the NISBA convention in Lake Placid. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but Thursday, I attended the law conference, which was actually awesome. The law conference every year is hit and miss. This year was wonderful, and all the topics were completely relevant and up to date, and I actually enjoyed this one, every piece of it. Usually, some pieces aren't as good as others, but this one, start to finish, was excellent. Friday and Saturday, we spent attending many different educational sessions. I wrote up a formal report. It's on record if anyone has insomnia or anything would like to read it, but actually, it was pretty good. I thoroughly enjoyed the convention. I don't know about the others who attended, but I thought it was great. The best part for me, or one of the best parts for me, the highlight for me, was the commissioner's presentation. I don't know if you guys went to that as well, there were so many people there. I think she's amazing, and she did an awesome job highlighting the changes and so on, so I just like the way she handles herself. Obviously, she's got a long way to go, but she's making changes, and I respect that. Legislative side, on October 26, I did attend the roundtable discussion with Mrs. Marchioli. Thank you for joining me again. We met with some local legislators and senators and their representatives to discuss our push for this year's legislative team, and this big, this year's big push is to get the state to share financial responsibility with school districts 50/50. They were pretty receptive, I thought, to what we had to say. It wasn't too torturous for you, I hope. And there was quite a bit of representation there, too, so I was pretty happy with that. On October 25, I met with the Safety Committee of the District as the board rep, and we discussed, we reviewed all the accident reports that have been reported so far in looking for potential hazards, like if there was a pattern or certain locations that might have been, that needed immediate attention, and we spent some time going through that, and then we, the committee itself put together- and then we, the committee itself put together a hazard report form that is now going to be posted, if it isn't, it will be soon, on the website, um, that anyone could report a potential hazard on this form. So, any of, any one of our residents can report a hazard by filling out this form on the website, and then it would come to the committee to take a look at, see if it needs to be addressed, you know, when it needs to be addressed. The next meeting is December 13th. Academy of Finance, I did not attend this, the last month's meeting due to Lake Placid, but I did attend the basket fundraiser that they had last Friday. That was awesome, the CKSO played, and they had 88 baskets at this fundraiser, it was crazy, it was at the Elks, and had an awesome turnout. I was a little worried, based on the football game being that night, that the turnout wouldn't be so good, and it, it was, it was a full house, they did a great job. Lastly, of course, the reserve fund meeting that we all attended on the 23rd, thank you again, Jamie and Dr. Valley, for putting that together, it was, it was excellent, very informative, really enjoyed that, and, and we needed that, and again, I'm gonna ask that we put that information in the binders for any new potential board members, because it is very, it's a great resource. And, um, one last thing. Lastly, on, um, the 28th of October, although this isn't necessarily board-related, it kinda is, but, um, Mr. Sage and I had a little, um, a little bet about the OSU Penn State game, and as you know, Mr. Sage, my Buckeyes beat your Lions, so I brought you a little souvenir from the game, and, uh, so, I'll pass that, it's just a tell, just a tell, but it was a lot of fun, thanks for being a good sport about it. What a game, the Buckeyes, of course, won, the Buckeyes won in the final minute of the game, 39-38, but it was an exciting game, appreciate you being a good sport about it, it was a lot of fun, so, go Bucks. That's it for me.
Hey, Brenda, what happened this past weekend? Thank you, put that on the record. So moved.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to report on? Okay. Well, just lastly, I also attended the, the school board convention, and I agree with Mrs. Christopher, it was time well spent. I did see the Commissioner speak, and she is making an effort, and I think she has the ear of teachers more so than Commissioner King ever did, so I think we're moving in the right direction. She did field questions, and still a lot of scrutiny from around the state, and it's interesting to see rural, inner-city, and then suburban and urban districts as well. So, board members, administrators from all over the state are there, and it's, it's great to go to the workshops and hear the Commissioner speak, but it's also very good to have conversations with people who are serving on school boards from around the state, to hear that, you know, we have different struggles, but then we have many of the same, similar, and similar struggles with respect to state governance, as well as, as federal governance with respect to education, so, again, time well spent. With that, if no one else has anything else to report, I'll turn it over.
Pat, can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
So, I, I was able to represent sort of the board and the, as a voting delegate, so I got my little paddle. One thing I did want to mention, I won't reiterate anything everyone's spoken about, I had multiple people come up as board members from other districts and say what a wonderful district Lancaster is. So, these are board members representing other districts, coming up to me and specifically saying how amazing Lancaster is, so that, that, that means a lot, so I just wanted to let everyone know that. For me to be sitting there and, and hearing that was, was an amazing experience, and it was a three-hour meeting, so I was, I was sort of, I needed a lot to get through it, and that's all it took, so I just wanted to let everyone know that.
Three hours?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to let everyone know that. What a wonderful district for other folks from other districts specifically to come up and say that, that's pretty incredible.
Good stuff. Okay. 9.0 Superintendent's Administrative Report, Dr. Valley?
A couple things. The Erie Niagara School Superintendent's Association, ENSA, has subcommittees every single year. Our subcommittees write position papers and statements on various advocacy topics, most recently, a subcommittee was formed to address the Constitutional Convention. The resultant ENSA letter, with my and 21 other superintendent signatures, have been posted to my website, please take a read of that. I would like to thank all the superintendents who served to write the, and finalize the document, a special recognition to Mike Cornell from Hamburg, Michelle Bradley from Lockport, John McSwan from Cleveland Hill, and Jeff Raby from Dupu for their time and service on this committee. I appreciate their work and their service to public education. Secondly, since our last meeting, our board meeting, that is, our Lancaster High School pool was opened, and it's cleaner, nicer, and most importantly, it's safe. Along with the roof work, grout and drain work was also performed while the pool was drained, the pool area was also painted and cleaned. Next summer, in that area, a new ventilation system will be installed as part of the Capitol Project, and in other areas of the district, work continues full steam ahead. The Lancaster New Java Gym Area, if you've driven by there, is being worked on, and the Walden Avenue Bus Garage as well. If you haven't had an opportunity to drive down Walden, please do so, you can see it from afar, and it's looking better and better every single day. The new high school track has been completed, and it looks beautiful, all striping and painting has been completed, to my knowledge, in the last couple days, so things keep moving forward, and I'd remiss, again, if I didn't state how much we, you know, the Board of Education, administration, teachers, staff, students, et cetera, how much we appreciate the support of this community as we improve our district's facilities for our children. So, thank you so much to everyone. Mrs. Christopher mentioned the District-wide Safety Committee, which she represented the board. The Health Insurance Committee met last week to review the district's health plan performance for 2016-17, a specialty co-pay assistance program, also the district's 2017-18 wellness incentive, durable medical equipment coverage, and the dependent, independent eligibility. Mr. Sage and Mr. Gallagher represented the board at that meeting. Those two that I mentioned there are just two of the examples of the board members' time and commitment to this district. You also heard various members talk about going to, uh, comp, the NISBA Conference, and so many other things that they do. We see people up here at the meeting and behind cameras at meetings, but there are so many things, committee meetings and things that these ladies and gentlemen do behind the scenes to make our school district great, all in the effort to make this district better and to improve the learning and the atmosphere and environment for our students. So, I just wanted to thank each and every one of them for their time, commitment, and their service to students in this fine school district. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Valley. 10.0 old business, anyone care to bring up any old business? Anyone? I just have one point, I did, as I said in correspondence, I did speak with Mrs. Ford regarding a transportation issue that she brought forth, and while I didn't give her the information that she wanted to hear, what I did explain is that our transportation department was simply implementing the policy that's put forth by the Board of Education, and while it didn't satisfy her needs, you know, the policy is put forth for the safety, security, cost-effectiveness, all those things brought into play. Okay. 11.0 new business? 11.1.1 personnel items? 11.1.1 personnel changes, could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes as written?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 11.2 education items? 11.2.1, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Special Educations report?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 11.2.2, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Preschool Special Educations report?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.0 are the business and financial items. 12.1, could I have a motion to accept the financial items as written?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.2 to 12.8 are for information only. The first is a second policy reading of 7240 student records. 12.3 is first reading of 5640 smoking and tobacco use. 12.4 is first reading of 7320 alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and other substances. 12.5 is a first reading of 7520 accidents and medical emergencies. 12.6 is a first reading of 3125 website accessibility. 12.7 is the first reading for 5660 school food service program, our lunch and breakfast program, and then lastly, for information only, 12.8 is a first reading of 7670, our due process complaints, selection and board appointment of impartial hearing officers. Those will be voted on at a future meeting. 12.9, could I have a motion to accept the surplus equipment report?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.10, could I have a motion to accept the surplus textbooks report?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.11, could I have a motion to accept the construction change orders?
So moved. Second.
Okay, and as always, Joe Armani's here, does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the change orders? Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.12 is a nice egg easement, could I have a motion to accept the easement?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So moved. 12.13 is the SES enrollment study agreement, and, uh, so this is, this is the agreement, the next one is to schedule the...
Correct.
Right, okay. Could I have a motion to accept the agreement as written?
So moved.
All those in favor? Oh, sorry. Any questions or comments? This is the one you want to talk about, the one I forget to say questions or comments. Okay, go ahead.
I, I do have a, a couple comments. I read this, I love this, I think it's awesome. And I basically, but I, but I want to further understand it before I go voting on something. The, the point of this is to spend a little money to save a little money in the long run, bottom line, would you agree with me? Whoever wants to answer?
I would say it's, I mean, we're employing this, this company to study the data as presented and to simply make recommendations, observations and recommendations based upon their experience and their algorithm, I guess you could say. So, it's to spend a little money to, to inform us as to what we can expect in the future, based upon the numbers, based upon logistics, based upon the demographics.
It would give us ideas to save money in the future, for example, like redistricting, does this have, this has to do with redistricting, or, um, I mean, like, the, planning for the future, um, how can I say this? In order, in order for us to spend this amount of money on a study like this, we're going to get something out of this, we're going, we're going to recoup this money in some fashion. Correct?
I mean, yes, and I'll ask Dr. Valley to respond to you more specifically, but in my estimation, or my, you know, summary of what we're doing here, is that we're looking at the current state of the district with respect to enrollment, and then also population, and then we're going to study the map of our district. You know, that word redistricting, that's, you know, far in the future as even a consideration. What we want to do is educate ourselves in terms of where we are right now, and where we can expect to be based on those trends, and decisions that we will be confronted with and have to react to, or, more desirably, decisions that we can plan for and forecast, and thus, yes, save money and be the most efficient and effective school district that we can be. So, you know, that's my take on it, Dr. Valley, do you want to? So, I think that's what we're looking at, I mean, we're, we're spending money to, to have a firm that has vast experience in this area, to simply educate us and, and make some recommendations that we can ponder as a board and as a community.
Okay, so, is it fair to say, then, that any, that what is in this document that was given to us is what's going to happen? So, is this community focus group going to be put together?
Oh, absolutely. So, let me, if you don't mind, I'll just explain to anyone that's listening and watching, whatever, exactly what this is. What we're talking about is a company called SES, and at the board retreat, the board talked about, you know, some of the issues that we have in this school district, let's just be honest and say, hey, listen, you know, we have increased enrollment at the K through 4 level, while we have decreased enrollment that's still running through the school district. So, we have to contend with that, because we closed a school in 2010, Central Ave. So, we talked about that, and we looked at the numbers, but we have a Hillview Elementary school that's at capacity, we have a little flexibility in the other three elementary schools, but we have to get ahead of it, and this Board of Education said way back in September, let's get ahead of this, let's, let's employ someone, you asked me to go and look for the best companies in the, in the state that specialize in this kind of thing, to not only be cost-effective in what we do, whether it be transportation, or faculty, staff, and all those other things, but most importantly, how our, our students and our community is distributed. So, that, this is, this is a group that has this expertise in that, and they will come in and do that. So, the first meeting, which is the next thing on your agenda, Mrs. Christopher, is for the Board of Education to decide on a date, November 20th or 27th, for these professionals and these people, these gentlemen to come in, and then they will take you through at that meeting, everything that they will do. But yes, that is one of their hallmarks, transparency, giving all the information, all the data, putting it right up on our website, so that we can have a meaningful dialogue and open with all, everyone having all the information. So, that is the goal, and they will come in here on whatever the board decides, November 20th or 27th, to do exactly that. I think it was Mrs. Stupczynski who asked in the, before the meeting, you know, who would be invited to that. First, everyone's invited, if they want to show up, but I think, you know, if there are a lot of people, we'd have to decide, and we have a list, I like lists, too, and we have lists of people who, throughout the years, have been passionate and excited about these topics. So, I would imagine that they would be selected to be part of, you know, leaders in that, in that area. So, I think tonight is passing the contract to employ these people to actually come in and do it, and then on the 20th or the 27th, that's where you let it rip, and ask every single question, and they will have answers. Working with them and discussing with them, they have quite a bit of experience and expertise in this area, and they most assuredly will be able to answer your questions.
Thank you. I, um, I'm all in favor of this, and the one thing I like about it most is that it involves the community to make this decision. That's what I wanted, you know, with other decisions, so, I'm thrilled that it's going to be a community decision, totally transparent, and take our time with this. I read the, I read the, um, projected dates, and I, this is so organized, it's crazy, this is so up my alley, this whole document right here, but this, um, service deliverables with the timeline that they give us, this is fantastic, so, I'm all in favor of this, if it plays out just the way it's written on this paper, and the transparency piece is huge, I think the community's going to be in favor of it as well, so, I just wanted to make sure that I'm voting on what's exactly on this paper, and now that I, now that I know that I am, let's, let's do it.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, those opposed? So moved. 12.14 is now to pick off, pick the kickoff meeting date, if you could pull out your calendars, 11:20 or 11:27? I don't have a preference either way, I'm available for both. Is anyone opposed to or unavailable on the 20th? Okay, we have one, how about the, how about the 27th? Is anyone not available on the 27th?
No.
Okay. You're not?
I'm good. Any day, if you want.
So, what do we do on this event? We have one, do we have any other dates, or are we picking one of those?
Rochambeau.
Rochambeau?
Yes, Rochambeau.
Yeah, do it, you might as well, I mean, unless it's, unless it's, you know, well, let's say this, let's say this, let's say this, you know, whoever isn't the winner that gets the meet, you know, missed the meeting, you know, we'll make sure to fill you in as much as we can.
We could be...
But, you know, just for the sake of holding the meeting, do it, so, let's, let's be clear here, the one who prevails, do they not get to come to the meeting, or are they coming to the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you prevail, if you win, right, you're coming to the meeting, good for you.
I'll be there on the plane, yeah.
Okay, well, so, right now, you're rochamboing for who's coming to the meeting, let's just be clear.
Now, wait, is this the best out of three?
Is it one or three?
Just one.
Just one, just one shot. Just one. Just one shot. One shot. Go. One shot.
Are we serious? This is how we're gonna decide this?
This is the most unprofessional thing I've ever seen.
Wait, are we doing three and... Oh, okay. Ready? Okay. One, two.
Go again, right away. Cut them up. Okay, so Kelly, you can be, you can come on the 27th?
Say she's lost it, Ken.
All I got to do is lose.
And Dr. Valli, do we have, will this be in the board meeting or to be announced as to?
Yes, after this.
Okay, so that'll be the 27th. Do we have a time?
6:30.
6:30. And that, the location will be determined?
Central Ave.
Central Ave unless otherwise?
Unless we have word that we have a bigger crowd and then we'd move it.
What are we calling this? Work session kickoff?
Enrollment Study Kickoff? I mean, it's, yeah. Well, SES is the name of the company, so Enrollment Study Kickoff? Okay, so can I have a motion to accept the date as 11:27, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. Next, we have 12.15, a contract amendment for pharmacy benefit dimensions. Could I have a motion to accept the contract amendment?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.16, could I have a motion to accept the contract with Stoll Environmental?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.17, could I have a motion to accept a contract with SJB Services?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.18, could I have a motion to accept the Reserve Plan acceptance?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.19 is the Scholastic Achievement Recognition Dinner, where they bring in scholars from all over the area and we honor them. Could I have a motion to accept that proposal?
I have a question. I know we do this every year. And by no means do I want to take anything away from kids. But we're donating to this and we're covering the cost of our students and those attending who go to this. Did we know that? Did we know that that covered both?
Yes.
I didn't know if anyone knew all the details of it. So go ahead.
I mean, she was saying that we make a contribution and then we cover the dinner for our students and those who attend on our behalf. Where the contribution covers the dinners, right.
Free children.
Right.
Free students.
Right. But it covers, you know, the dinners and it also covers the awards and the ceremony and so it's...
Yeah, it's 500 plus the dinners.
Right. Plus the, 500 plus the dinners.
500 goes towards the side.
Yeah, it goes, right. It goes towards the event and then we pay for the dinners, right. So... But this is something that I have attended before with our top students and it's a very nice night. You know, a good organization and in my opinion, it's money well spent. I think we would be remiss if we didn't send our students to this. I think we would regret it, in my opinion.
I don't, I'm not saying that to send our students to that. I'm just saying we, as a muscly responsible board member, I'm simply just saying we have a lot of cash to send free students to a dinner. I have no, I have no issue sending students to a dinner and that's what I do for a living. I have absolutely no problem supporting students and recognizing them for their hard work. Absolutely not. I'm just saying we are, we're making a donation and we're sending students and the adults who attend with them and we're paying the whole, paying the whole kid's payroll here.
Yes, we are. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.20, could I have a motion to accept the Food Service Operating Reports for September 2017?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.21, could I have a motion to accept the Cold War Veterans Exemption Apportionment Resolution? Okay, so we don't have to, yeah. This is separate. This is how we implement, right. See, I knew that.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Separate.
Yep, this is separate. This is the logistics of implementing.
In addition to the resolution.
Right, in addition to the resolution. Okay. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 13.0, public hearing. Welcome to all those who have come to observe this meeting this evening. This is a time set aside for public hearing, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to five minutes in which to address the board. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in a dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully and we take seriously what you have to say. I would like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas and sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attack. This policy will be strictly enforced and anyone violating the policy will be barred from addressing the board in the future. Thank you for your cooperation. First up, we have Anthony Malone, Acadia Site Contracting. Is Mr. Malone here this evening? Okay. That's the only person that we had signed up for this evening. 14.0, future president. Pardon me? No, if you haven't signed up, that's the policy is. Okay. Well, Mrs. Ford, if you'd like to sign up next meeting, you can sign up to speak at the meeting. Yes, sir? Did you want, you wanted to speak to the... Okay. In some instances, there is a public forum with respect to the Veterans Exemption. So in this case, I would, if it was all right, if it's all right with the rest of the board to give Mr. Petosniak a couple minutes? Yes? Go ahead. Go ahead. I spoke with Mrs. Ford at length about this issue and it would be my opinion to stick to the policy because these are issues that have been discussed at length already. And I did share, I did share in old business our discussion and the crux of the discussion. So is everyone okay with Mr. Petosniak having a word? Go ahead, sir.
I hope I get through this. I promise it won't be long. A lot of times, people thank me for my service to the country because I wear military attire at times. And it's tough for me to answer that because 35 years ago or 40 years ago, that wasn't the kind of reception we were given. And I want to tell the community and everybody that I served to the best of my ability. I'm no hero. The heroes are those that didn't come home. And Mrs. Phillips, you are a blessing to this community. You do excellent work. Superintendent, thank you very much for calling. The Board of Education, I appreciate. You're not compensated in all the time that you put in. Mr. Jackson, this is a great community to send. All my kids went here. Now my grandkids are coming here. So it would be a real shame if this was not the splash title in some publication that we are the first community to recognize a lost generation of soldiers. And I want to thank you for your support. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. 15.0, may I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation case number 02-17-1436 and to meet with the district's attorney?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? At this point, we'll be going into executive session. Effectively, the meeting is over for this evening. Thank you for coming, everyone.